Work for the G O T. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. All the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, for your consideration, I ask that you add Resolution one, five, six, eight, nine. It's a resolution appointing our judges for the two thousand twenty-four presidential nomination. You could add that under new business as the last item, so item eleven point five. Ask that you consider adding that to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve it with that change.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the agenda with addition. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Motion carries. Implication from Hunter's Ridge Church. Good evening.
I thought you were retired.
Hello, everyone.
We went over this already.
Unless I thought I re- I've started, I'm retired, I come from retirement. No, I haven't come back from retirement, okay? Yeah, interim pastor at Hunter's Ridge called me yesterday and said, hey, can you help me out? He's got another meeting going, and so I said, yeah, I, I've been retired three enough months, but I haven't forgotten, okay? So I can do that, okay?
So you had time to warm up, right?
There you go, there you go. Thank you. Let's pray together before we start our meeting. Father, thank you for gathering tonight. Your word, the scriptures teach us that we are to pray for those who are governing and in authority over us. And so I just want to pray for each of these on the council tonight, and all of the staff. Thank you, God, for them and their willingness to serve you in this, in this capacity. And I pray that you'll help them gain wisdom and discernment about decisions they have to make for the city of Hutchinson. And thank you, God, for this, the work that they do. And the scriptures also teach us that we're just not to pray for the leaders, but we pray for all people. And so I think about police, I think about our fire department, I think about all those who serve and help, first responders. Bless them and the work that they do. I thank you for the, all the people in this community. And as I've been here for twenty-two years, I have just particularly noticed more diversity, even though it's small and incremental. It is fun to see just different cultural influences that are in our community. And I pray that we'll be able to work well together. I just thank you for all of them. And Father, your word calls us to think about and pray for the, the leadership, that there would be peace and there would be prosperity in our community. So bless them tonight. And thank you, God, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, if I go to the elections.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great and justicial law.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we have a couple of resolutions underneath there. First one is Resolution number one, five, six, eight, five. Resolution accepting one hundred dollar donation from Russell Lorraine Erickson to the Hutchinson Police Department towards the Law Enforcement Memorial Park.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Opposing, nay? Motion carries. And then we have Resolution number one, five, six, eight, six. Resolution accepting three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents donation from the I. J. Birch Family Foundation to the Hutchinson Police Department towards the Parrot Omega Plates for Officers Body Armor.
Make a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay? Motion carries. Public comment? Just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of January ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and a summary of the city administrator's performance review of January ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
And make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay? Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Crow River Cutters on February tenth, two thousand twenty-four, at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. And B is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the McLeod County Agriculture Association on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. C is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Gopher Campfire Sanctuary on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And D is approval of Resolution number one, five, six, eight, seven, authorizing to apply for redevelopment grant from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, Jorgensen Hotel Site. E is approval of Resolution number one, five, six, eight, eight, Committee to Provide Local Match and Authorizing Contract Signature on behalf of Jorgensen Hotel Project. F is approval of purchasing top grab, low survey, and global positioning system equipment. And G is claims appropriations and contract payments, Register A.
Motion to approve, consent agenda one.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Opposing, nay? Motion carries. Consent agenda two. I have a check on there for my business, so I'll be abstaining.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, with me abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay? Motion carries. No public hearing, no communication requests and petitions, unfinished business. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash eight, four, six, ordinance authorizing sale of municipally-owned land to H. D. C. Properties LLC.
Mayor Council, this is the second reading of an ordinance to officially authorize the sale of the old police station and the parking lot to the south of that. There's been no changes since our first reading, and staff would ask you to consider a second reading and adoption of that ordinance.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay? Motion carries. Under new business, adopting legislative priorities for two thousand twenty-four.
Mayor Council, I think this is probably maybe the fifth or sixth year that we've done this. A lot of these are similar to what we've done in years past, and a lot of them are carryovers. But, you know, usually I think we found this to be helpful. We do pass it on to our legislators, so they're aware of it. It has sparked some conversation in the past. But I think it also helps just kind of declare, you know, our stance on some of the issues that may be impacting the city. I like to include what the Coalition of Great Minnesota Cities has as priority along with League of Minnesota Cities, since we are both members with those groups. A lot of times we, you know, we're supportive of what they're doing, not necessarily with every item, but I think it's always important just to, to highlight the ask. So sometimes we want to restate some of those things, but sometimes we don't state it, knowing that it's being carried forward by the, by those two groups. So with that, I know I had sent this out earlier, didn't have any feedback at that time from council members, but I guess I'd ask that you guys consider the list that's been put forward, this combination of past councils and then current recommendations from staff. So be free to answer any questions you may have.
I think it looked good.
Yeah.
I would, pending anybody else wanting to, but I'd make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay? Motion carries. Discussion on strategic planning session for two thousand twenty-four.
Because I couldn't allow you guys to get out of here in just five minutes. You want to spend just a little bit of time of kind of going over what I put in your council packet to kind of describe what we're thinking about as we really enter the next couple of months, for, from a strategic planning standpoint. You may recall, we had a meeting back in July where we first kind of looked at a variety of different things, noting that our previous five-year plan kind of expired at the end of twenty twenty-three. And so at that time, we had a discussion and the kind of direction was given to kind of update our end statements and kind of convert them into core values, of which we did towards the end of two thousand twenty-three. So then we're kind of at that next phase of really wanting to dive into more of that five-year plan of the need to develop a new five-year plan. And so I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about what we're proposing, get some feedback from you, which would then lead into some, some future actions. I shared this last time, I don't need to go through this, but once again, you know, one of the main goals of the council is to really help set that vision, to establish those goals and objectives for the city as a whole. The last time we've kind of done that as more of a collective was in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. The, I think Chad and Gary were a part of the council that time. We kind of did a two-day kind of retreat here at City Center where I think we spent six hours one day and probably four or five hours the next day, kind of hatching through a variety of things. And that's how we ended up with that, with that plan. So we're proposing to look at doing something a little bit different this year. Just a reminder, these are the seven core areas of focus that we established through our core values when we updated that this past fall, going into winter months. I think it was November, December that we updated that. So that really would be the basis behind our discussion when we look at some of the strategic planning. But before, I think it's important for us to go back and take a look at what we did in our previous plan. We identified kind of eight areas that we were going to focus on. And that was, as listed up there, and I've noted where they're at in regards to our core values. But, you know, we want to be known as a destination place for recreation, art, and leisure. We wanted to have a growing, diverse economy with skilled workforce. We want to have adequate, affordable housing for all. Welcome in safe city facilities to serve, service current and future generations. We want to have cost-effective, reliable, sustainable energy and practices. High quality multimodal transportation and infrastructure, citizen engagement, participation, involvement, and then fiscally responsible management to serve the community needs. And so that was kind of the eight A areas that we identified for where we want to go as a community over the next five years. That was back in, like I said, two thousand and eighteen. And you may recall, I shared, this was all the projects that came out of that. I'm not going to go through every single one of them, but just to highlight to you, first off, the importance of what I saw of a collaboration between our elected officials and staff, and then the results of that. So it wasn't just one of those plans that we talked about that sat on a shelf. You can see all the variety of projects that actually went right back to what we identified in that, that five-year plan. And then we even had indicators of, okay, was this a successful five-year plan? And we've, and I've kind of shared that, this was at our meeting back in July, so I'm not going to say a walkthrough, but you can see for most of it, it was extremely successful. And during that same time, we had a lot of new business development, business expansions, and new housing. I like to highlight that. That's not to say that we did that, or we were necessarily a part of it, but as I've shared since I got here, I think it's our responsibility, both from the elected standpoint and the appointed officials, to create an atmosphere that's conducive to growth. And hopefully, some of what we've done over the last five years has done that, and it resulted in some of what you see here on the screen that has taken place over the last, you know, five to six years. And so as we met in July, we, we made the point at that point, let's first update our core values. And so we took care of that in the second half of two thousand twenty-three. But really, we're now entering the new year, needing to look at what's our plan for the next five years? What's, what's our plan going to look like? And we need to be thinking about that as an organization. We see the results of what took place five, six years ago. Where do we want to drive the city moving forward? Once again, those are the eight areas that we identified. And so what we've brought forth, want to hear your feedback tonight, is that instead of maybe setting aside two days where it's pretty intensive, that we're going to spend multiple sessions being very specific on what we want to talk about. And so we've, I've laid out kind of a calendar. We run this by staff, want to get your guys' feedback. Yes, it's going to be coming in early. I tried to plan so it's the same night as a council meeting, so we're not necessarily having to redirect your whole schedule. But if you look at those topics on the left, they all match up with our core values. And so we'd spend one topic talking about housing. The next one, talking about health, recreation, and environment, economic development, transportation, public safety, and good government. And from those discussions, we would pull out areas that would then help in developing that plan and then finalizing that plan. So really, we're looking at a year-long look of some strategic planning. So that's kind of a thought with the goal of filling this in, filling in that new chart over the next five years. You know, really, we're probably looking at two thousand twenty-five. Some of it I do see as we're going into it this year, we might start some of that work. And I would say we have to start some of that work this year, specifically along housing, that we know is a big issue. But wanted to get your guys' feedback. If, if you're comfortable with this, we'll look to, I'll look to have an action item at our next meeting. We'll, we'll officially set those dates for future workshops.
I like it.
Hopefully, it won't have long council meetings, but it's just, like I said, to me, at least gives you an idea that we're going to be meeting before council meetings and be the, most, most of the time be the second meeting, but so. If you're comfortable with that, we'll look, I'll look to have an action item at our, our next meeting to set those dates, but just to, you know, and we're going to have a plan in place. We're, we'll probably send you guys some questions in advance that we're going to ask you, because I want you to start thinking now, this is an important part of what you guys need to do. And it's easy for staff to come with ideas, but we really want to lean on you guys to, to help kind of push us along and guide us along in that. And so I want you to be thinking about, you know, these different subjects as we get into having those conversations. So, so we'll have some talking points. We'll have probably some strengths, and we kind of like a SWOT analysis almost. We'll kind of share where we are today, what the challenges are. And like I said, we're, we're kind of planning to also get some questions to you to really kind of help, you know, determine where do we want to go next in some of these areas, so.
Last time we did it, I thought it was real beneficial, didn't you, Chad? We threw it back and forth and...
I, I am a hundred percent on board with this.
Yeah, you know, we might get to a point where we say, hey, we, we might spend a little more time on something. We maybe have to have another meeting, or maybe we need to take two or three hours of time to, but that's, like I said, this is our plan right now. Doesn't mean we, we can't adjust it, but that's kind of what we're, we're looking at, so.
Honestly, like you said, we had, what, that one day we were, what, four hours?
Four or five hours.
But, I mean, the time flew by, you know, because it got really good conversations.
Yep. And I think that did a good job of laying the, the groundwork. And I don't know if we need to necessarily reinvent the wheel. I think it's just more or less identifying, are those areas that we kind of highlighted here? I look at that, and I, I think that's still where we want to be in the next five years. It's just that identifying what are the projects that we're going to attack to get us there. And projects, projects don't necessarily mean brick and mortar. It could be policy changes. It could be a wide variety of, of things. So like I said, what I want to do is be able to fill out that sheet and maybe that top line a little bit. That's, I think it'd be part of our discussion, but really spend some time, focus on those, on those core values that we want to evaluate. I think each one of those topics will, allows us to be a little bit more specific. And I'm going to be honest, it allows us to be transparent with the public. I think some of what we need to talk about are some difficult discussions that the public needs to be aware of the challenges that, that we're faced with. I'm, you know, specifically thinking about things like housing. It's, it's not an easy switch. Do this, and this will lower the pricing for everybody.
Everybody wants it and says we need it, but very few ideas on how to accomplish it.
Yeah, you know, hopefully, we'll come with some tools, and that will then help, you know, you guys give us direction on whether there's policy changes that need to take place, or whether there's things that we need to pursue. As I said, we'll have, I'll, I'll be looking to bring this back for an action item to set those dates, but just wanted to have the discussion first, so you kind of know where we're, where we're looking to aim on that, so. That's it.
Very, moving on, eleven point five, Resolution appointing judges for the two thousand twenty-four presidential nomination primary election. That's Resolution number one, five, six, eight, nine.
I'll enlist at taking this one, so.
Yeah, our presidential nomination primary election is March fifth, and we have to appoint all of our election judges at least twenty-five days before each election. So just with the timing of things, our next meeting is within those twenty-five days. So tonight, we just need to appoint our judges for that March fifth election.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve the election judges. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay? Motion carries.
Sam, Melissa, do you want to maybe just touch on absentee and what we're doing here at City Center for the public?
Yeah, so for the P and P election in March and the primary in August, the general election in November, we always have absentee voting. We've always had absentee voting here at the City Center. But now that motor vehicle has moved out, we have that entire space to use. So for any voters coming in for any of those elections, absentee vote, they'll check in at the window here for now, and then everything will just be happening over in that space. It's set up really nicely with separate voting areas right inside and hope we can use it for a long time.
How early does that start, Melissa? Like one kid's time?
Yeah, so absentee voting is happening right now for the March election. It's forty-five days before I'm counting that right.
Is that whole true for the other two elections?
Yep, yep. So then in August, it starts like June twenty-first, and for the November, it starts like September nineteenth or so, so.
Right, thanks, Melissa.
Yep.
Governance, we have the public start commission minutes from September thirteenth, October eleventh, and November eighth of two thousand twenty-three. Chief Girferson, you have anything for us tonight? Mike, do you have anything?
No, no.
It wasn't so much.
Why would you even say that?
It's melting, because he knows it's going to melt the next week.
Yeah. He wants to take Fred. Kelly, you have anything for us tonight? Mark?
Yeah.
All righty, Dave, let's start with you tonight.
Thank you. I talked about mid, the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission and sitting on the Mid-Minnesota Regional Transportation Coordination Council. So if that's a mouthful, definitely, we had a meeting today. We covered a lot of ground on, we do a lot of talking. And we have staff that does the work, kind of like here in a, in a sense. But anyway, they had things like advocacy and inclusion, or matter, executive director, and they called open, so they're talking about the West Central Transportation, talked about the update on driver's license for all, with the parameters to, included in that, which is being able to read and write and, and take direction and be able to pass a driver's test. Family works to serve with children, mental health issues. Transportation across the country back in two thousand twelve, I believe it was, the state basically said, along with the federal government, that all peoples would have their transportation needs met as they needed them. And it's a, it's a job that gets to be quite in depth, because you're dealing with everybody from what do you call real rural areas to populated areas to areas like ours. And so the, the commission tries to get people involved. Volunteer drivers is a big thing right now, because they, this Fed's changed the Fed's guidelines for that from fourteen cents a mile to whatever the government standard is today, whether sixty-two or sixty-five, whatever it is. But still, volunteer drivers are a hard commodity to come by. So they've worked with everything from young people coming out of school that have driver's license, twenty-one, work with the retired population, work with taxi cab companies that can afford something to give to other people. They try to, I mean, it's just a big gamut. And it's getting somewhat better over the last five years, but it's still got a long ways to go. And we've been working on, they've been working on this since two thousand twelve. So it's got a long ways to go yet. But it is something that is, I wanted to give you one bit of information, I think I do, if I can find it down here quickly, it's called W W W dot Minnesota Help is the webpage. And it covers everything from, and I hate to reuse the word, now I'll do soup to nuts, but it covers everything on there. They got all kinds of filters to go through and whatnot, but it can answer a lot of questions for people that are savvy with the computer and can, you know, handle that type of stuff. So that is something that was brought up today, that it is out there. I don't know how widely it is advertised that it's out there, but it seems like it's been out there for longer than what I'm aware of. So it's called W W W dot Minnesota Help. And you can then link onto your pages, however you want to do that. So, yeah, you got it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Mr. May.
Not much. No committee hasn't been, I don't think, since the last one, so. I'm in the same boat. I haven't had any committee meetings, although Pat and I will have E D A tomorrow, so we'll have all kinds of news next thing.
Okay, that sounds good. More info than we need, okay.
Well, I'm not on the Arts Council, but I went to the open house for the Hutchinson Artists the other night, and really great work out there. Attended the library board meeting yesterday. A lot of things going on there. In fact, the kind of a neat thing is they're collaborating a lot with the Center for the Arts now, because the reading, poetry, and including that into kind of the arts line. They're doing a lot with kids. They have a crochet club now that they allowed twelve kids and then filled up within twenty-four hours. They're adding a lot more things, puzzle competitions and leap year activities and all kinds of things going on over there. They've, they've done really well with donations, very well with donations. So the library is keeping ahead of expenses and adding new things every day. So good meeting and a lot going on over in our library.
Sounds good. Anything else?
That's it.
Mary?
Matt?
I don't have a whole lot either. Just a reminder, this is Gary primarily for you, that the Fire District meeting is February first at six-thirty, is middle, seven o'clock. The council's always, well, at least one other member is always welcome to attend if you want to. Just in case you're not familiar, obviously, our fire department serves more than just the city of Hutchinson. We've got the townships. And there's a separate budget. So this is their annual meeting where they And there's a separate budget. And so this is their annual meeting where they talk about kind of basic fire, fire service, set the budgets, talk about equipment replacements and, and whatnot. As some of you may or may not know, there is some of the equipment that's technically owned by the townships that's in our, our fire hall. That's because they paid for that and it's mainly, it's mainly used out in the rural areas.
Yeah, the two tankers.
Yep.
Back, you know, dating myself back. When I first got on, rural had their own pumper. And then the city had pumppers. And since then, they kind of, they buy, buy them together now. So they have shared equipment, like Matt said, so.
I should interject too, on the fire, fire department's behalf. I visited with a resident who had a house fire last month. Then he said, our fire department was completely, so professional. He said, the way they handled the home and didn't come in, they used fifty-five total gallons of water on a, on a pretty extensive fire. And he said, they saved this house and the damage in it just by their professionalism. So I should pass that along.
That's great to hear. Yes. That's all I have.
Mary, actually had, well, we're supposed to have airport, but Mike was tied up. So we'll, we'll let him by this time. But actually, actually stuff going on out at the airport. They had the airport, the FAA came out and did the light inspection and did a flyover. And kind of everything's kind of kosher now, right, Mike? There, the PAPs, the PAPs have to be, yeah, precision landing lights. And hangar six, one and six, two are pretty well buttoned up, I guess. They have to do a walkthrough yet for electrical, right, Mike?
Yeah, and we received a certificate of occupancy last week. So every first, they should be available around.
Okay, so the two new, two new hangars are ready to go. H R eight, actually, so this is December's numbers. So we had three new listings of houses in town. We had eighteen sales that were closed. Medium price was two hundred and fifty-seven, seven fifty was the medium price range. So, you know, we're just plugging along yet, so. And our occupant, our our vacancies, yeah, are still like really low. So that's all I got.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thanks, everyone.